I'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I have to give you, I'm going to tell you how it will proceed, but I have to give you a notification first that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on the Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to your Zoom meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. With that, I'd like to introduce the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, Board Secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. Jane Spesakastri. Tony Nacastro. And Don Gurn. And the way the meeting will go is Lisa will read the application. You please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period if anybody is here from the public and would like to speak. Please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the first application.
Okay. This is a application for dimensional variation, special permit, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. The property address is 12 Kimball Street in Lunenburg, assesses map 9819. The applicant is Gregory Roy from Dillison Roy on behalf of Richard McGrath of 12 Kimball Street. The project includes construction of a deck on the southerly portion of the existing structure, which is proposed 33.1 feet from the Kimball Street line. The question and answers are as follows. Please describe how the proposed action will prevent conditions that are injurious or dangerous to public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion. The reply, the proposal includes the construction of a modest-sized deck at the site. As such, there will be no injurious or dangerous effect on public health, no increase in traffic, or any dangers of fire or explosion. B, please describe any material adverse effects on the land and value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The response, the proposed deck is likely to increase the value of the property. Due to its location on site, there will be no adverse impact on abutting properties, and the project is not expected to detract from any amenities in the neighborhood. C, please describe how the proposed use or activity will be operated with reasonable regard for order and unsightliness if in open use. The response, it is expected that the proposed deck will be constructed and maintained in a manner consistent with normal and routine deck construction and maintenance. Plans for the proposed deck are attached for reference by the board. D, please describe how the proposed action will reduce and/or prevent noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent properties. The response, the proposed project is not expected to add any noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare at the lot lines. And there's just a brief memo to the board members from Dillison Roy. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Richard Kimball, Dillison Roy Civil Design Group Incorporated has prepared an application for a special permit for dimensional variation of the front yard setback for the construction of a proposed deck on the property. The property is approximately 0.38 acres and has frontage on both Kimball Street and Hollis Road. It is located in the Residence A zoning district, which requires 40,000 square feet of area and therefore is pre-existing non-conforming lot. The proposed deck, while not encroaching any closer to the side lot lines, will encroach any further onto the front yard setback to Kimball Street. The required setback in the RA district is 40 feet, and the proposed distance is 33.1 feet. As such, the applicant is requesting zoning relief of 6.9 feet to allow placement of the deck. We trust this meets your needs at this time. If you have any questions or require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. And that's from Greg Roy. There's just a brief email from the building commissioner requiring this hearing tonight, a letter of authorization to allow Mr. Roy on behalf of Richard McGrath, a site plan, building plans, and a copy of the abutters list, all which were notified two weeks prior to tonight's meeting. And just a short memo from our DPW director. Be sure the footings do not interfere with the sewer pipe, and he uploaded a sewer as-built for the convenience of the applicant. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant or his representative to address the petition.
Thank you very much. Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. As always, I appreciate the reading of the application. It takes a lot off my shoulders. Really, essentially, all we're here for is the, wow, that is bright. I'm sorry. It's brand new. The deck is this lower rectangle. Sorry, that's not going to work. The rectangle on the southerly side of the house, the house is the darker or hatched-in polygon. The applicant put addition on that a few years back and is now looking to put the deck on. And that's really, that's really it. Because it's fronts on Hollis Street and Kimball Street, there's, it's actually a front yard setback. The front of the house actually faces Hollis Street, but because Kimball Street is a right away, there's actually two front yards here, two front yard setbacks. So we have a 40-foot setback from the Kimball Street right away, which is 40 feet, and the proposed deck would be approximately 33.1 feet away. So that is why we're here.
Okay. Okay. So that deck, did they just, when I went by, it looks like there is some new decking there? Is that what was done previously on a, at the start of the decking?
It may be. Honestly, I haven't been by the site, so I'm not sure. I know that this was flagged when he went to pull the building permit, and, you know, the building inspector asked him for a certified plot plan, which we prepared this. He submitted it, and then the building inspector told him to come before you. So I didn't think anything was done. Is it decking material that's sitting there ready to be constructed?
No, it looks like it was starting to be framed.
Oh, was it? Oh.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure. It could have been something, you know.
Yeah, but he's been doing.
I didn't go up to look at it.
He has been doing construction on the house over the past couple of years, so it could have been something left over. I'm not sure. Or maybe an old.
They had a sliding glass door that would lead out to it.
Yeah.
And that's all in.
Yeah, so they may be, that may have been part of the, actually, the building permit that they pulled for the renovations of the house, and then there, this is the next step. I think there was something there. I'm not sure what it was, but.
Okay. All right. And of course, it faces Whalum Lake, so that.
Correct.
It winds that.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay. I'll open it up to the board.
I don't have any questions.
So the construction has not started on this?
As far as I know, not, but I haven't been by the site, so I don't want to misrepresent. It hasn't been, no one's told me that it was.
Started construction. This is all null and void, though, right? Because if you already start something without the permit, it's all null and void, so.
Well, it sort of looked like they had done some work to the right side, but not going forward when I looked at it.
Oh, that might be.
So what faces, what's faces Kimball Street is actually the back of the house.
Correct.
And so the actual driveway comes in from Hollis?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. What was the addition that was?
The addition was actually on the Hollis Street side. They filled in a portion, like a point.
Right in here. And when I was looking at it, it looked like to the right, but there was a shed, but the shed may be on the adjacent property?
Could be. It's pretty tight. It's only 50 feet wide, that leg there. So.
Very tight.
I don't think it's on our property, because it would be on this plan if it was, so it's probably on the adjacent property. Unless it was done after we did the surveying, it's possible, but.
So what the deck does is it gives a side view of Whalum Lake, I think.
Yeah, Whalum Lake would be.
Because from the, I guess, the easterly side.
Yeah.
It's like a forest there.
Yes.
But that's on the other property.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not right on the lake, of course, but it's.
The whole length of the house on the Whalum Lake side.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
How wide is it going to be?
I knew you were going to ask me that. You know, there's plans in your application. I didn't bring them, but I think there's dimension plans there.
Some of my plans are so light, I can't.
Oh, okay.
Pick up on.
Hold on, let me see if I can.
This is 9.4. I think it's like 10 to 12 feet.
Okay.
So it's not like we're building, it's not like there's anything proposed.
And of course, you're here because it's a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot, and you don't need the side yards because nothing's changed.
Right, right, yeah. That was the determination by Brian, correct. And then, yeah, it's really just because we have that 33.1 dimension from the closest point of the deck to Kimball Street, and it really would have to be 40. But, you know, where we're at here, it doesn't seem like it's really going to create any adverse impacts on.
32, okay. And then this. Yeah, yeah. So it's, it looks like it's 32 feet long, but I don't know.
Oh, that's probably.
If there's 12 feet.
Yeah, it's probably 30 feet long, but out from the house, it's a 10.
I think it's 12.
12, yeah, that sounds right. Kind of a standard.
If I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah. So, you know, it's pretty.
Okay. All right. I don't have any further questions. The board has questions. Oh, public hearing? Anyone from the public? Nobody. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
I have none.
Nothing for me.
Then I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the request as submitted for a, what is it, a?
Dimensional variation.
Dimensional variation of 6.9 feet.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And aye. A dimensional variation is granted. I do have to review the special permit. It is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdictions over the premises. Special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. Special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And with that, thank you. Good night.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck. It's a nice-looking modification on what he's doing.
None of you are my client, none of you are Richard.
Nope.
None of you are my client, I'm sorry. I just started about time.
Have a good night. That was quick and easy.
Are you here from Team Sunshine?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we can go into the next hearing. The next hearing involves 560 Mulpus Road, Lunenburg, considering 18.92 KW ground-mounted solar system. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
Okay. The applicant is Benjamin Carroll of Team Sunshine. The location of the property is 560 Mulpus Road and owned by Claire Ryan. The project description is 18.920 kilowatt ground-mounted solar PV system, 44 panels. Let me see. With the application, just looking for their text, is a site plan which is very, very light and difficult to read. I've darkened some copies up here, a list of abutters, some photos of the solar array And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay. The reason you're here first is because of some of the, of course, with the zoning board, considering with the zoning, you're here. Yep. To address some of those issues. So again, as Lisa said, it was kind of light.
Sorry.
So I would ask you exactly what you're looking for as far as the.
Location and everything.
Yeah, the zoning. Thank you, Lisa. We do have a darker copy now, as you might hope. But all of the setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's, I remember it's got, it should be 200 feet.
Yep. From, 200 feet from the plot line on the right side, is that what you're saying?
It should be 200 feet from all of the, well, from the frontage?
Yes, 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 yes. We have a lot.
Yeah, the last time somebody came, I don't have all the information. I don't remember at all.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But I think the plan was drawn that this was one, and now the plan's.
Yes.
Got that section cut out. So I don't know if they originally owned that or what.
So I'm not sure what was there prior, but, you know, just, my name's Benjamin Carroll, obviously Team Sunshine. It's a pretty straightforward, beautiful little ground mount system for the client, Claire, who's also here. And from what I understand, I also hold the CSL for the company, so from what I understand, we're in good shape here. It's beautiful. It's also, one thing I love about this is it's really nice and tucked in in the property as well, perfectly south-facing, so it's obviously going to generate a lot of electricity and help the home be a little bit more efficient, which is great.
So it's going to be for just the one home?
Yeah, yep, just for this home, so the, you know, consumption of the power that it's produced is all going to run right to the home, which is great. Again, I think all of us can kind of understand the, you know, the needs of electricity nowadays. It's getting a little crazy. So this ground mount is going to feed the home strictly. It is nice and tucked off of, you know, Mulpus Street, Mulpus Street, that's kind of tucked around the corner of some trees, too, which is really nice, so it kind of is located in a nice part of the property. And the beauty of that is you can face that directly south-facing, and it's just going to get sun all day, all year, which is really nice. Sometimes it's challenging with the roof-mounted system, if the roof isn't, you know, perfectly south-facing, it's obviously not as efficient. And, you know, when you look at the plot lines here and everything, we're in a really good place for setbacks as far as, you know, the backside backs up about, you know, just shy of 60 feet, about 56. From the back to the right, it's about 289 feet to, you know, the right, or at least when you're looking at the house, kind of in this orientation, and then 112 to the left. Again, we do a lot of these. They're pretty straightforward. We have a really good site team who comes in and, you know, does all the screws, and then we put the posts in and rack it and put the rails in. So it's a pretty straightforward project.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what do you see as the front dimension? What do you have as far as distance?
From.
That's the variance I think you need, the dimensional variation.
Okay, so are we talking, just so I'm on the same page, from Mulpus Road?
From Mulpus.
Okay, so it looks like from Mulpus Road, if you go about 538 feet, you get to the corner of kind of where on certain pictures you'll see, basically that gets to like where some of that tree line is, and then you go left, another.
Can you use this, please, so they can follow along?
Yep. So if you go about 538 feet, you get to this kind of corner, then the ground mount's here, which is about 58 feet, 58 and a half feet from this plot line this way. And then if you go that way, you get about 109 feet.
Okay, which is the 58?
That is from this.
There to that.
To the ground mount.
And that is actually the property line, correct?
This is, yeah, yep.
Yeah, even where the 58 is.
Correct.
That's the property line. So that's where you need a dimensional variation, because that requires that it be 200 feet from a property line in the regulation.
So you have it here, from here to here, for 200 feet?
Right.
Yeah.
But you don't have it from your property line there to where the units are. You know what I'm saying?
So we're.
No, not that. You've got to go, you've got to go to the property.
You're talking, right here, this has to be 200 feet?
There to the units is supposed to be 200 feet from the property line to the unit.
Is that a town code?
That is in the lodge. I mean, this is just for a step. You guys are going to go on the planning board.
Yeah.
Lots to do there.
Yep.
You're also, I'm sure, going to go to conservation, because it looks like there's some wetlands right along.
Yep, yep. Honestly, whatever's needed. I mean, I've done a lot of these. The requirements are normally a lot less than that from any sort of lot line. I mean, we're 200 feet from the right, we're 500 feet back, we're 58 from this section, which is all a wooded area right here.
I understand. I'm just going by what's in the zoning, the rules. Let's see where that is.
So it says it's 58.5 feet to 101.5 feet.
Yep.
From the property line.
Yep.
Not 200.
So you're, I mean, yes, it is on the front of that property, it's 60 feet from that line. From the street, it's 500. From the right side, it's 200. From that line, 60, 58. From the left side, 112. This is a pretty large plot.
Right, it is a large plot.
Let me just try to find that for you. Do you have anything that shows where the Dupree House is located on 550 Mulpus Road? That's the one below. That also butts down.
Like that?
On Mulpus Road.
The house is close to Mulpus.
You have to come if you want to speak.
To answer the question, the Dupree House is close to Mulpus. There's a barn that's closer.
It's on TV, so you've got to have it so they can hear you.
Name and address, please.
So the house is close to Mulpus.
You have to give your name and that.
Oh, Brenda Dupree, 90 West Groton Road, Lunenburg, Mass. The house is close to Mulpus. There is a barn that's further back, so just to answer your question.
About how far from the proposed site is the barn from?
I think it shows, so is that 11?
Right, yeah.
No.
He's good.
It would be like, I think in your plan, I think it would be within that 11, that plot 11, so it doesn't go into like the lot 10, because Dad also owns that lot 10, too, so.
Okay.
Okay. And I have some questions after.
Oh, yeah, you're free to speak as much as you want. You can stay here if you want, if you want to, you know, talk with him or come back as you wish. Just raise your hand if you want to come back.
Okay.
Okay. On this, you know, front yard, which is, front yard shall be at least 50 feet provided, however, that when the lot line is a residential outline district and abuts a residential conservation, recreation district, such, the front lot setback shall be no less than 200 feet. So basically.
So the front lot would be where Mulpus Road is?
The front lot would be where the lot line is, because they don't own this property. Their front is here. In other words, this is somebody else's property. That's the line.
Right. So what is, what is this?
This is, this is their property, right?
Right.
Which would be this, but you're not going there. You're not going to these, this way. You can't go across their line. You know what I'm saying?
This is all on mine.
Correct.
Right.
But the these are over here, so they're only, they're 58 feet from this line.
Stop being a voting member.
You know what I'm saying? That's what the lodge, what they consider lodge. That's actually why you're here, because this board can give you relief from that.
Yeah. So my.
The building inspector, that's how he interprets.
My, you know, conversation with you guys would be the simple kind of understanding that when we're talking from Mulpus Road, which, you know, in most property scenarios, that would be considered kind of like the front of the property. We're very tucked back from that, and I get, I understand what you're saying here.
Yeah, it's like you can't use somebody else's property for your setback. You know what I mean? I can't say, because my neighbor's got a bigger yard, I'm cutting across his yard.
Okay.
I guess, just to go with what you were saying, the next piece is side yard, which also says the, essentially the exact same thing. So the, you could call it the front lot line or the side lot line. It would need to still be 200 feet.
Correct.
According to.
So.
How big is the lot itself, the whole total?
Do you?
I believe about five acres.
Yeah, shall not be less than.
Yeah.
So it doesn't qualify.
So it's a almost five-acre lot.
Okay.
We're talking about, you know, a ground mount on a five-acre lot. Trying to relieve, obviously, a house of the pressures of rising rates and whatnot with renewable energy here. I mean, I definitely consider, I understand what everyone's saying here, where I guess that's why we're obviously having this conversation, is we're, from normal standards of construction, we are in a pretty private area of a lot, realistically.
Right, right. I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
I went there, I liked, didn't go on the property, but I looked, I could see where I was going.
Yep.
It is a fair distance.
Yep.
Like I say, to see it, though, I was actually looking over somebody else's line, is what I'm saying, somebody else's property, to see where everything was.
Okay, yeah.
But I understand what you're saying. I'm not saying you're not incorrect, I'm just saying that, that's what the bylaw is. And apparently, that's what the building commissioner found as he sent you to us.
Yeah, okay.
I guess we'll just continue along. Any other questions from the board on that?
On July 12, 2023, the Zoning Board of Appeals approved installation of freestanding solar panels on the same property.
Okay.
Are these in addition to or in lieu of what was approved by the zoning board? Are these in addition to or in lieu of what was approved by the zoning board back then?
In lieu of?
I thought that was the case.
What is, what was the answer, what was the question?
In lieu of, well, we, we approved freestanding solar panels on July 12, 2023
I believe.
for this property.
I believe, I may be wrong, I don't think it was quite this big, I don't think it was an 18. See, I mean, it could have been a small, which would have been a 10.
Yeah, I looked at the notice, I can't tell from the notice helping.
Right, right, no, I know, I'm just trying to go by memory, I think that was around a 10, which falls under a small, you know, small field, which is, the rules are completely different.
Okay.
We, the small ones actually come before us, large ones go mainly to the planning board. We are only here, we wouldn't even be here if we had all the proper, you know, setbacks.
Okay.
Any other questions? And like I say, he's right, we did approve a system on this property from another company. Like I say though, but unfortunately, their plans were a little bit flawed, what they gave us. And what, what everything was. And you do have a large piece of property, it is way off the road.
Yep, yep.
Is, is one of you an abada? You're the abada? You're the owner? Yeah, I'm looking for who owns that piece of property, and if they are, you know, in favor or not in favor, or, again...
Yeah, yeah. So, it's, my husband and his sister own because their father passed away, so, and I'm not sure if they would be, I mean, I don't think it would be a problem, I did have a couple, but I'm, I can't speak for them, but I did have a couple of questions, like, should I ask them now, maybe? Like, so Mulpus Brook runs right behind, and so you folks are going to dig a trench, right, to, to cable, and so we're wondering if you're going to put silt fence up to protect the brook?
I, I will tell you, as I mentioned to him earlier, this is just the first hearing for just a dimensional variation.
Okay.
They, they are going to have to go through a complete process through the planning board.
All right.
And also, I noticed, like, just what you're speaking, that there is the conservation area that, they'll have to go to conservation because of the wetlands.
Yeah.
There's no question about it.
Okay, so, so would that be a question I should ask?
Yeah, but you can bring it up here as well.
Okay, so I would ask that, that's one question, the silt fence, because, you know, my husband installs power lines, and they always have to do that when they're anywhere near a, you know, a brook or water. And then the second question I had is, so, this is a lot of power, a little bit of amperage can kill someone, so I'm wondering if the homeowner will be required to build a fence around the solar panel, like it's an attractive nuisance, like a swimming pool or something? So, that would be another question.
Again, that, you go to planning board, you're going to ask it, because they have to just, you know, they gotta look at the visual impact.
Right, yeah.
The design, minimize the impact in the visual on the neighborhood, they have their buffer zones.
Yeah, yeah.
They, let's see, the site has to, you know, how much vegetation, what are they going to clear?
Right.
They do have to put up, even if they put up lighting, they gotta explain what that lighting will be and how it won't affect anybody else, so there's a lot of things the planning board will go through with.
All right, okay, and then we'll get notice when the meeting's...
You will, when the planning board takes it up, you will be, as an abada, you will be notified.
All right, okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So I guess what we're saying is you do need a dimensional variation
Mm-hmm.
for the frontage, I think it was 58 feet?
So, yep, 58.5 and then also, I mean, I guess, yeah, it'll be a lower, because on the other side it's 109, which is still under 200.
All right, okay.
So they need a 141.5 feet variance?
That's pretty big.
I think you should just...
Huh? What are you pointing at?
Don't, don't put numbers on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should this be tabled until after they do a little more planning?
I think, I think if we... I'm just going to ask this.
Sure.
Is there any way this could be, but then again, you'd go closer to the other line? I was going to say, any way it could be moved a little, or is this, this it?
Kind of...
Is that keeping you out of the wetlands and keeping you
Yeah, and it's...
close enough to the house to run everything?
Exactly, and it's kind of the optimum distance from all, because obviously, like, electricity loses power over distance, et cetera, et cetera, it's also kind of the most complimentary space when you look at the five-acre lot to, you know, kind of minimize any sort of, you know, kind of visual from the street, et cetera, and it's obviously the optimum direction for the sun. And, and I think here, I would just really like to consider that, you know, we are going through a pivotal time, just in general, as, you know, towns and buildings become more and more electrified, like, this is something that's going to need to happen, you know, at scale, and so I would just, you know, obviously, this is the type of thing that takes a house and provides the security, the durability, the efficiency that all of our houses are really going to have to go through, as we, you know, have more and more demand on the grid and whatnot, these types of projects help homes be self-sufficient. So I totally, I understand everyone's, you know, kind of considerations here, and would just like to add that to the considerations.
Did you want to speak? Let's come to the mic.
Hi, Claire Ryan, 560 Mulpus. One of the things that has generated this need, and I'm happy to share a copy of this last... It's over $1,400. It goes up to 2,200, I thought you could use the demo.
Oh my God.
Exactly my sentiments. That's why I brought it, I thought you might like to see it, feel free to pass it down, other people may want to see something like the national debt for an electric bill.
Oh my God, I am shocked.
Yeah, and...
That's what's happening.
Yeah, yeah.
The system is designed specifically to get 100% of that electricity to it, it's not oversized or undersized, it's...
Well, yeah, and I know that, you know, the panels themselves are getting more, better and better and better, and taking less and less footprint.
These actually are more panels, you are 100% correct, there are more panels.
I don't know if you guys saw that.
But they are smaller panels.
I believe it.
The other problem for spacing, this spot is, it's a hill, so it reduces to eliminates sightlines, you can't see it from anywhere. I own 560, I also own 570 right next door, so that also blocks the neighbors quite a bit, it's, but there aren't a lot of trees on the lot, so there's no clearing to be done at all. There's just grass.
That's important.
Yeah, there's no clearing, there's no trees to come down, except the one that fell down the other day, and I was glad the panels weren't up yet, because it would have come right down on top of them, it's just a fluke.
Okay.
So there is no clearing to be done, it also does eliminate completely the visibility of any of the neighbors, can't see it because it goes over the edge of the cliff, and truthfully, I don't see it either, because I think they're ugly, no offense. I think they're ugly. But I don't want to see them, I'm sure my neighbors don't want to see them.
Yeah.
So that was the reason for that particular choice. If we try to bring it up on the hill to get it a little more away from that lot, we're going to bump into the driveway, which runs right down in front of that, and you're welcome to come on the property anytime.
Oh, yeah, I do, I do remember something.
Yeah.
The driveway, you're right.
Yeah, the driveway, this runs right down the side of the driveway, and the driveway runs down.
Yeah, I, I remember that.
Yeah.
And also, any time you have solar, you're right, the sun kind of dictates too where it has to be, and what's, what's in front of it, trees and all of that, so you're, you're absolutely right, I think...
So I did put a new roof on the house, but I still don't want ugly panels.
We can just grant them relief from the front.
Any more que, any questions I can answer, I'm happy to?
I have solar and I have paid that much in nine years.
This will bring mine down to $348 a month.
You are.
And I'd be thrilled.
I don't blame you.
Yeah, so I'd be thrilled.
I don't know what to do with all that money.
I don't know, I'll have to find something, but, yeah.
But beware of unitil, because whatever you generate that you don't use, they keep.
I believe you.
And I've, nine years I've accrued, even though I give a certain amount to other people, I still, they said they were going to get, start giving checks out in the 1st of Jul, July this year, nothing, and it, it's unrealistic.
Beware of unitil, is the...
I signed up for the SMART program, so they sent me a check.
That's very nice.
They take their money.
I should have done that, but I missed that for whatever reason, something was going on.
That's SMART.
This is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's 10 years too, thank you very much.
Yeah, this goes up to 2,200, if I actually use the AC and things like that in July.
I know.
I just didn't turn it on this year, partner's sick, so, he's always cold, so...
Do you have a pool?
Yes, we didn't turn that on either.
Wow.
Okay.
Because of this.
Yeah? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to, if she wanted to speak again or anything, anybody else want to speak? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. And any other questions from the board?
I don't have any further questions.
No, I, I think driving by there, I mean, there's plenty of trees behind it, and then, I mean, I was using this little rendering here that kind of shows where it will be, and, I mean, it's, it's way off the drive, it's a good distance off the driveway, so, I mean, I'm assuming somebody plows that driveway, so there's far enough away that the snow piles aren't going to pile on top of them, but it'll still get the sun, I, I don't see a, a better spot on the lot to put it, really, so, just my opinion.
Okay. No other questions, no other comments, I'll ask for a motion, and I would just ask you to put it as, as on, shown on the line.
I would make a motion that we grant this special permit as shown on the plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. With that, the variance is granted, I do have you one more thing to read. Special permit for a dimensional variation is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all Africa or local state, federal boards, or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions, non-compliant to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. Any certi, after certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds, no special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and the special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, good luck with your...
Thank you.
Good luck with the planning board and the conservation board.
Well...
And the unitil bill.
Thank you, guys.
And any other board that has jurisdiction.
Good luck.
If there's no other information or any other things before the board, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.